One more.
That's frightening.
Call this city council meeting, the Atwater City Council, April 8th, 2019, to order. Roll call, please.
Ambries?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Vera?
Here.
Creighton?
Here.
You have a call.
City Attorney report had a closed session.
Yes, Mayor and Council, by 5-0 vote, the Council authorized the City Manager to enter into a settlement agreement.
Any other matters?
No other matters. Otherwise, direction was given to staff.
Okay, at this time, we'll call the flag salute and the pledge by Poppy Ferris. So we'll do the flag salute. Ms. Cale, you want to lead it?
I'd like to give this to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the prayer.
So Heavenly Father, we come into your agreement right now, Lord, in the name of Jesus. We thank you that we could come together to honor and officiate this city. Lord, I pray for your wisdom over the council, Lord, over the mayor, over those in attendance, Lord. I pray for your unity in this place so that we can go farther and we can be better. And I just thank you right now, Lord, that you are the Lord of this city. And we just owe you all gratitude and praise for your work in this city. And we thank you that you continue to guide the hands of those in leadership. We bless you tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Subsequent need items?
There are none. Mayor.
Approval of agenda as posted or amended?
Raymond? Oh, sorry.
Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Cale. Call for the question.
Raymond?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ceremonial matters. Is Matt Anderson here? No, we're going to take it out of order then. Maybe Matt might show up a little bit late. We'll move on to Atwater Girl Scout Troop 67. We're going to have the Police Chief, Mr. Salvador, and the Girl Scout troop. Come on up here, up front here, please, all the girls.
While they're coming up, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, members of the Atwater community, Michael Salvador, your Police Chief, we're honoring some young ladies tonight that are Atwater's finest. Girl Scout Troop 67 has been together since they were in the third grade. They're now out at Atwater High School. And they took it upon themselves to have a cookie fundraiser, but not just any cookie fundraiser. They fundraised for the cookies. Hello? Yeah. They fundraised for the cookies and then they gave 100 boxes of cookies to the law enforcement, fire personnel here in the county of Merced. My very first chiefs meeting. My very first chiefs meeting, and there's all these bags of cookies. And when I found out it was Atwater Girl Scouts that did that, I thought it was only natural that we celebrate Atwater's finest. And they're here. So why don't you tell everybody who you are?
I'm Moira Conway. I am in 10th grade.
I'm Lauren Tresso, and I'm a freshman.
My name's Emma Blalock, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Natalie Albano, and I'm in 7th grade.
My name's Ruth Hansard, and I'm also in 7th grade.
My name is Teagan Conway, and I'm, again, in 7th grade.
Well, I want to thank you, ladies, but it looks like you've got more. You're giving them to what? Oh, okay. So this is a donation to our veterans groups here in town also. So... Oh, any veterans here tonight? I know I've got one there, I 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 got one behind you. So, girls, do we have a certificate?
Yes.
Okay. So... We need... Thaddeus is here. All right, ladies, who's the leader of the pack? Or the troop? Who's the troop leader? Come on, scoot over. This is a City of Blackwater Certificate of Recognition awarded to Atwater Girl Scout Troop 67 for their community service project. A challenge to the community in which a donation of over 100 boxes of cookies were distributed to all the first responder agencies in Merced County and several more for every veteran in the room. So let's take a picture.
Big smile.
Big smiles. One more with the mayor. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for everything.
To this for tonight.
Thank you very much. So John, Cale, and Sandy. We're going to do the Elmer Wood... Or the Recreation Track Meet Champions, Elmer Wood Elementary School.
So on March 22nd, Friday, March 22nd, all the community schools got together and they had a huge track meet at Atwater High School. And it was so much fun for me to go out there and watch. And I know there were a lot of people in the stands watching, and I had to run over and watch my grandson in the long jump. And I didn't get to see my granddaughter from Elmer Wood participate, but she was there too. And out of all those schools, Elmer Wood got the most points and won, and we congratulate them. And Sandy, you have the plaque, and you want to...
So...
Go ahead.
So it's a competition between all the schools to see who gets to carry the plaque for the year. And it's been since 2011 that Elmer Wood took the plaque. So it's great to see it back at Elmer Wood. That's where my kids both went to school. But especially, thank you to all the kids that participated in this. It was a great turnout at the high school, and it's a yearly event. I missed it this year, I apologize, but I was at another meeting, and John attended for us. And it was even bigger this year, and you guys had a larger turnout, and you guys won. So congratulations, Elmer Wood.
So this is head coach Olivia Foye, and everybody knows Tim Sanchez. He was there, he helped out big in the long jump and over there with us. So we were really, really glad about that. We needed his help. So I'd like to present this plaque to you guys.
For one year.
Until next year. And if you could just keep it, it's pretty heavy, you could just keep it. If you win, you don't have to do that.
What's your name?
Aria. Foye.
I just want to say thank you. For the last 20 years, I've been involved in this track meet. Every year, I see kids go through, and it's kind of nice to be represented this way with the city. And once again, thank you.
You work hard.
I want to thank the volunteers that came out and helped. We couldn't have done it without the Atwater Elementary School volunteers, and Atwater High brought out students from one of their groups, and they helped us out tremendously. And then Roger Wood came out, as always, and he was there helping. And Tim, that was just a big help. Could not have done it without all the volunteers, so...
Thank you, guys, all very much. Does... You guys want to get some pictures before you head out? Anybody want to come up and take pictures, or we're good? Roger? Why don't you... We'll get Roger up here with you guys, too, if you want. Okay. So Mr. Wood, after you take your picture, can you come up and join us?
All right. There we go. Got that one.
You want to say anything? No, you don't.
Well, I just know that Peggy Heller is very sad.
So that means Joe Rivero, we took it away from Peggy Heller, so there you go. All right, thank you, everybody. Jessica, come on up here. Owen, front and center, young man. As part of the Fruitland Mafia here. By your mother. So Jessica's on the Atwater Elementary School Board. She's a new school board member, and this is Owen Reed, and he's also going to Elmer Wood Elementary School. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so we'll just move on. If he shows up, we can...
Yeah, if he's not here, can we move it to the next meeting? We don't want to miss him.
So what we're going to do for Matt Anderson, since he may have gotten busy or whatever, we're not going to do his tonight. We're going to wait, try to bring him back, chief, so that we recognize him, because he's done a... So Mr. Anderson's... He owns a flooring company here in town on Main Street, and Matt's donated to the city over the last several years, since I've been on the council. Brian Raymond, myself, and Cindy Vera remodeled the City Manager's office and the executive area in City Hall out of our own pocket. And Matt found out about that, and he donated the carpet at his own expense and had it installed. And then we got a brand-new police chief, and he heard about how bad the conditions were in the police chief's office, and he donated carpet again, and we remodeled the police chief's office. So this is just a great example of our community coming together when it needs to come together. And Matt didn't have to do this, and he insisted, and we really, really respect Matt and appreciate it. So we're not going to let you get off until you show up and you get the certificate, so... So also, I want to remind everybody that we have Atwater speaker cards. They're in the back of the room. We're going to a speaker card format. This will be the third council meeting in a row. So if you haven't had a chance, raise your hand. If not, you should have turned it into City Clerk already. How many speakers do we have tonight?
I have four so far.
We have four speakers tonight, so let's... What? Okay. Yeah, you don't have to fill a card out, but if you could, please, that's fine. If you don't, we will still let you speak. Next presentation, California Health Collaborative, Merced County Tobacco Control Program. Stephanie here? Okay. You guys are teaming together?
No.
Okay.
I'm support.
Support, I like that. Look at that, chief stepping up. Thank you.
Support.
Thank you, chief.
We are well tuned machine here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so it's armed, it's ready to go.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Stephanie Gonzalez, and I work with the California Health Collaborative. I also have a youth member here with me and a community member.
Who's your youth member?
A youth member. I'll have her present herself.
Hello, my name is Crusady, and I'm with the Youth Action Advisory Board.
My name... I'll be translating for her, but she said her name is... Sorry, Esperanza Aguilera, and she's a local community member. I apologize. So the California Health Collaborative is a nonprofit organization, and we're committed with enhancing the quality of life and the wellness of people in California, particularly the underrepresented and the underserved communities. Over the last 25 years, we have implemented a total of 18 tobacco control programs, and seven of those are currently funded across California. Three of them actually serve Merced County, and one of them is working specifically in the city of Atwater. The program that I am representing today is the Merced County Tobacco Control Program, and we are a countywide program attached with reducing tobacco-related health disparities and improving health among Merced County residents. So I have a little challenge for you here. So today, I will be talking about tobacco, flavored tobacco products, and our youth. Before I do this, I would like for you to take a second and look if you could pick out which ones are the tobacco products. I'll give you a couple of seconds.
You're asking which ones the tobacco product?
Yes. Which ones do you think are the tobacco products?
They look like candy.
They all look like candy? All right. Well, there are actually three tobacco products on the screen. The hot sauce and the slushy are actually e-jews, and e-jews is used to add into the e-cigarettes. And the one toward the right, the blue one, it's an electronic nicotine delivery system known as a sorin. The only one that doesn't contain nicotine is a harmless eraser. As you may have noticed, it is quite difficult to spot the tobacco products. They look very similar to your regular, ordinary school supplies or just regular products. According to research, 86.9% of all adult cigarette smokers began smoking by the age of 18. With that being said, we know now that four out of five kids, that's 80% of kids, who ever used tobacco started with a flavored tobacco product. So flavorings in tobacco products, especially menthol, are very concerning to us because they help mask the naturally harsh taste of tobacco, making it easier for youth and new smokers to begin and continue smoking tobacco. The industry has identified the next way they can hook our youth. There are different types of flavored tobacco products. They come in different shapes and sizes, such as Swisher Sweets, which are little cigarrillos, e-jews, and e-cigarettes or vaping products. These products, as you can see, are disguised to be very colorful and appealing to youth. Many of these products look just like ordinary products that youth purchase and that they are attracted to, such as gummy worms, vanilla cookies, and apple juice. The industry also provides more affordable tobacco products, making them more accessible to youth. If we consider these two tobacco products, Swisher Sweets and regular cigarettes, Swisher Sweets is a more affordable option, which can be purchased either two for $1.49, and some of them even come in packets of five for just 99 cents. The industry now has over 15,000 flavors and counting. The industry has actually started to create their own flavors, such as Dragon's Blood, Brain Freeze, things you can imagine, but you don't necessarily know what they taste like. The less dangerous these tobacco products seem to youth, the more likely they are to use it. We now know that e-cigarettes are the most commonly used product by youth. They actually surpass traditional cigarette use. So more youth are seeing these products and thinking they are safer and less harmful than cigarettes, so they are using them at much higher rates. So as we think about the impact these products have on youth, we need to consider addiction as one of those. Another thing to consider is that cigarrillos have three times the amount of tobacco compared to cigarettes. We also know that the use of tobacco products can lead to lung and oral cancer, plus heart disease, and they kill more Americans than AIDS, alcohol, motor vehicles, homicide, illegal drugs, and suicide combined. Youth who initiate substance use before the age of 14 are at a greater risk of substance dependence and have 34% prevalence rate of lifetime substance abuse. The industry figured out a way to target our youth at a much younger age with flavored tobacco products. They know this is a peak age to development of addiction in our youth. Our community actually collected a convenient sample of public opinion polls from Atwater residents to see what they think about flavored tobacco products and youth. 96% stated that it's important to enforce laws that prohibit the sale of tobacco to underage youth. 96% of stores... 96% agree that stores should be required to have a local tobacco retail license in order to sell tobacco products. And 91% stated that they would support a local policy that would restrict the sale and/or prohibit the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products. So tobacco retail license, also known as a TRL. There's a state-level TRL and a local TRL. In California, 144 communities have adopted a strong local tobacco retail license ordinance in efforts to reduce illegal sales of tobacco products to minors. A local TRL is different from a state-level TRL, which is renewed on an annual basis and doesn't provide funding for local enforcement. A local TRL also requires an annual renewal fee, which will be used to create a local enforcement program for the city. Some of the benefits for a local tobacco retail license include a self-funded enforcement program through the annual renewal fee. Coordination of tobacco regulations, where violations of an existing local, state, or federal tobacco regulation violates the license. Plugins, which may include either a plugin provision to restrict the location of tobacco retailers, the packaging size, or even the restriction of flavored tobacco products. The most important benefit is that it will help protect our youth by reducing illegal sales of tobacco products to minors. Many states and local communities have realized they have the clear authority to restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products to reduce tobacco use and its harms to its citizens. At least two states and over two dozen local communities in the U.S. have restricted the sales of flavored tobacco products in their own communities. Our long-term goal is to work with the community to provide a healthy environment for youth in Atwater. So this is just a bit of education for council to consider. I did distribute an informational packet, and in that packet, you will find local data from the California Healthy Kids Survey that was collected at BuHak and Atwater High School. It also includes the Merced County Tobacco Grade from the American Lung Association, and the list of communities who have adopted a tobacco retail license in California, including the Central Valley. And I have also provided sample policy language for a tobacco retail license, and some letters of support from organizations in Merced County. I would now like to invite our youth member, who works with the California Health Collaborative, to share her experience, and after that, our community member will also share her experience.
What my experience with tobacco is in schools has become so popular that you can't go there without seeing kids smoking it in classrooms. They ditch classrooms... They ditch classrooms to go to the bathroom to smoke tobacco, like the e-cigarettes. They go to the... They smoke it in the classrooms, like in their backpacks underneath the tables. They go in the halls, they smoke it. Like, you see them smoking in the buses, too. Like, the teachers have no idea they see, you know, the students smoking in their classrooms. Like, when it's dark, of course, they can't really see the smoke gathered anywhere. And they have this one thing where they hold their breath in as long as they can, so in order when they breathe out the tobacco product, the smoke is gone.
Thank you.
She says she's a mother of a student here in Atwater High School, and that her biggest concern is the youth accessing these products. She also stated that she would want to know more about what we could do here in the community to reduce the access to tobacco products and the youth getting access to them. And she also stated that she would like to support for... She's here to demonstrate support for a local tobacco retail license.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions for us?
Ms. Cale? Ambries? Ms. Vera?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
I don't think so. I support that, so I think we'll work on it at staff level with exploring your idea of a TRL. We'll talk to our staff, and since you guys brought it to us, I think that's a great thing. We can start working on that.
Thank you. And we did provide a sample tobacco retail license. We do have access to others if you are interested. And if you're interested, we could definitely follow up with a workshop or talk more information about it.
And I do agree with what you guys are saying. I've had several phone calls over the last two years of places that sell tobacco products to underage kids, and I've personally gone out to those businesses and talked to them and let them know that we, the community, are watching, and we don't want to see that happen, so we could take it to the next step.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Poppy still here, or...
Yes, she is.
Okay, there she is. Right in the back. You were up front earlier. That's okay.
Hello, thank you for having me. So we wanted to invite you all and the community to a prayer walk that we're having on May 4th. My lovely assistant, Renee Kyle, is passing out a flyer, and we have more that we will have available if you guys are interested in one. So basically, the point is that we just believe that... So basically, the point is that we, um, we just believe that, first of all, you guys are doing an amazing job. Renee and I were just talking in the back. We've been to several council meetings, and this one just has a really nice peaceful vibe. I can see that things are moving forward and it, it's a reflection of you guys' hard work, but I also know that it's a reflection of the prayer that's been happening in your, in the city for all of you individually as well as community, um, leadership. And so, our intention is to start here at the city building on May fourth at ten-thirty in the morning. And just to start with a little bit of instruction to, um, our prayer walkers, and then from here, we'll walk to Veterans Park. And at Veterans Park, we'll have a victory lap. And in that victory lap, some of, um, you have volunteered or let's see, voluntold. You've been voluntold to attend and to help, um, with cer- certain subjects in prayer. We'll be praying for you leaders. We'll be praying for our public servants, the police, the fire, uh, people, all of the public servants who are so, uh, just dedicated to this city. And we'll be praying for our neighborhoods and our businesses. And we just really want to cover the whole gamut and just really invite the Lord to come in and take over in this place because we know that Atwater is an amazing city. I grew up here. I went to school here. I graduated from high school here, and then I moved away, but I moved back. And so, uh, like a lot of other people, you know, we're proud of our city and we know that there is such a potential here. And you guys are just doing an amazing job, but as I mentioned, I just really see the progress. Um, we started doing this prayer walk about twenty-twelve, and we and other youth groups in the area, church youth groups would come. We'd meet outside, we'd sit on the, in the Rose area. We'd sit around the, um, water feature and pray for the city and pray for the leaders. And, um, we haven't stopped. And so, uh, we just feel like it's a good time for us to gather our efforts together. We know lots of people are praying for you, and they're doing it alone and they're doing it in their home. And so why not gather together and, uh, just make a spectacle of ourselves? And so we just want to invite you. We thank you for allowing us to come and talk about it here tonight, and we're just going to keep pushing forward, and we know that this is going to be a city that's on the map for all the right reasons.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have anything?
Okay, so just a reminder, as I mentioned, some of, some of you here on the podium have been voluntold, but the others of you that haven't yet, you can easily get ahold of me and you can have a space in that day as well, because we look forward to all of us being there together. So thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, comments from the public?
At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
First speaker?
First, we have Steve Mead.
Mr. Mead?
Evening. Steve Mead, City of Atwater. Couple of quick things. Um, I was talking to a citizen, well, for about an hour and a half last Thursday, and I've talked to several who hear things brought up at city council and their opinion is nothing gets done. Of course, that's why I had an hour and a half conversation to explain to them there's quite a lot that gets done. But it would be my suggestion or idea to possibly send out a letter or include something in our monthly letter explaining things that have been brought up at this podium and what action, if any, has been taken on it. Examples would be a couple of things I brought up that I want to bring up again. The trucks driving down Broadway continue to destroy not only the county's road, but are putting grooves in the city's road, so destroying ours as well as. It's not a truck drought, uh, nothing seems to be getting done about it. Target enforcement would be wonderful. Uh, it's not a fun place to drive down. It didn't used to be that bad, but it's gotten real bad since those trucks have been allowed to be there. Second thing being, if you go down Green Sands, you'll notice that the fence at the golf course is gone again. Um, there was an accident there. I called it in. That, that happens to be right at the backside of my house. Um, I called nine-one-one, and we probably need to remind citizens that if you call nine-one-one on a cell phone, it does not go to Atwater. It goes to the highway patrol. Um, so I spent three minutes talking to this young lady, told her it was at the golf course, and she said, "What golf course?", which in my mind, it was Atwater, and I was wondering why they were asking. So it's important that we remind citizens, maybe in the newsletter, that nine-one-one on cell phones may not go directly to Atwater or do go directly to highway patrols. Three minutes is a long time when someone's not breathing.
Right.
So it's important that we do that. Um, if we could possibly take a look again at taking care of Green Sands. People come off of Atwater Merced Interchange, turn on Green Sands, and then it's a raceway. Or people come towards Atwater Merced, down Green Sands at the golf course and accelerate because they're in a hurry to get to the freeway. It's going to get someone killed.
Okay.
Absolutely. So it's very important that we look at those things. And I, one last thing, if I have time, I, and this is probably going to rub some people the wrong way, is my opinion as a citizen of Atwater, that since Mr. and Mrs. Johnson have seen fit to wa- or to, not waste, but to bring up their, their matters in a public forum, I would like as a citizen to know, number one, if we can do anything to help them, and number two, what's going on with it? Why are they not able to pay their bill? Well, how much is their bill? What's going on with their bill? They've made it a public forum. They've wanted to introduce it to all of us. And I would like to know how much they owe, when they last paid a bill, and all of the issues surrounding that. I'm a citizen. They're taking up public forum time to bring it up. I'd like to know what's going on with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so thank you very much. You know, we do the first person to this thing.
Mr. Johnson? Miss, yeah. That's okay.
First of all, I think you're wrong, so.
Okay. All right. Next speaker?
Your next speaker would be Frank Johnson.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Frank Johnson-Medesto. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Chief Salvador for, on his, uh, wise decision ma- making, by eliminating the administrative sergeant's position and putting Novinski back on the street. Bessenger promoting Novinski was one of the, of the most asinine decisions Bessenger made while he was, uh, chief. Promoting the most hated and least trusted sergeant to administrative sergeant was a major slap in the face of the other sergeants and line officers. Then Bessenger lied and said he would rotate the position. He never did. No wonder when Bessenger asked the APOA to endorse his Clovis City Council reelection, the Atwater Police Union voted thumbs down by overwhelming majority. And speaking of rotten apples, we previously brought to Bessenger and the new DA's attention the corrupt circumstances surrounding Petro's hiring of Brady Lister Ron Dash, who was previously fired from the Merced PD for time fraud card. A simple Google search will reveal his sorting history. Now we have learned that Dash has been on leave for several months pending a new internal affairs investigation at, uh, APD. We're not surprised. Our own investigation are continuing also. Dirty cops, corrupt former mayors, corrupt ex-city managers and ex-chiefs, we are hot on your trail. Have no doubt you will be publicly exposed and held accountable. As they say, you can run, but you can't hide. And I want to thank the city council for everything you've done.
Next speaker?
Lori Johnson?
I don't want to speak for my wife. She's at home sick.
You're welcome.
Richard Johnson was next.
This is your one and only shot.
What's that?
This is your one and only time.
I can't speak for her and then?
No. No, you don't get to speak for her and yourself. You can, you can do one or the other. If you talk really fast, you probably get them both in. You get three minutes.
I'll get them both in. We've been speaking for five years. I mean, nobody's listening or... In state, I know they can't step in. If you guys own your own utilities, so. I would like to ask you, Lori Waterman, what is the point of having us ask you for a meeting if you are going to talk about your polluted views in public forum? There were four people in that meeting, four people talking. It wasn't recorded. There was no unbiased witnesses. If you want the residents to really know what happens in our meetings, discuss these issues here at, at city council meetings. So everyone can come to their own conclusions, unless you are hiding something, unless you are hiding something. I'm sorry, I'm a little upset. We have nothing to hide. That's why we aren't afraid to discuss it during public comment. You are no better than Beverly Barrera, Barrera and the Atwater Times fake news media, spreading rumors, reporting only one side of the story. Your total disregard for the truth shows the residents of Atwater that with you in control of our city, there will be no transparency. The truth will set you free. We will confront you with, with it until either you admit what we know you know has been done to us, or maybe you should step down because you are looking more stressed every time we are about to speak. And like I told you during the meeting, we'll be speaking until the day we die.
You got a minute, Twatila?
What's that? Okay. I forgot I got two different, one thing, okay. Pursued to my rights under the California Public Record Disclosure Act, Government Code, Section sixty-two fifty, I ask to obtain a copy of the following information, which I believe is being with, being held by the city of Atwater. My request pertains to the request I made two weeks ago, a copy of each of these utility bills, which the city alleges non-payment. I ask that you acknowledge my request within ten days as required by law. You have not done so. This request is for the following information: What are the penalties set forth for cities like Atwater which disregard the law? I want to see?
Twenty-five seconds.
How many?
Twenty-five.
I want to see, I want to see penalties or sanctions, whatever they may be placed on the city as a whole. If you determine any of the, any of all, or, or all of the requested information qualifies for an exemption from disclosure and you intend to withhold it, I ask that you redact it for the time being and make the rest available as requested.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
We have Tom Lee.
Is that agenda item?
Yes, it's a agenda.
Okay, we'll wait till the end. This is just regular public comment. Any other members of the public that'd come forward at this time? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes. Last several weeks, been addressing the issue having to do with the new gas station going up over there on, uh, on Drakely or, uh, Wenton Way and Mitchell. The option to put in that gas station there would be over on Gertrude and Schaefer Road. That's in District One. It's in the city limits. It's, it's vacant land. It has, it gets traffic from Wynton, Santa Fe, all the way to Merced. That's ten miles. There's no gas stations out there. The, uh, Gertrude has been, or not, not Gertrude, Camilla has been paid by the county. It only needs a couple of, uh, hundred feet to reach Schaefer. Now, if that was to be an option, an option that would be accepted, here's the reason why you should. Wynton has three gas stations. There are fourteen stations in Atwater. They all exist in District One, I mean, District Three and Four. The majority of them do. To include the, uh, the truck and bus station down on the, uh, north end of Atwater Boulevard. There's also on Atwater Boulevard, four gas stations that are now vacated. They've been vacant for a lo- a, a long time. And, uh, these are all on Atwater Boulevard. Across the street from one of these, which happens to be one thirty-seven in Atwater Boulevard, you just locate a new Beacon gas station on Fifth. The, uh, the one that was related, relocated to, uh, to northbound Atwater Boulevard, that's still there, and these all still have pumps, all beat up. All the tanks are still in the ground. None of them have been taken out of any of these four. When they built that one on, on, that new one on Beacon, that new Beacon Station, they took the tanks out. That used to be an old seventy-six gas station. The, uh, the proposal of putting that gas station there?
Twenty-five seconds.
It is not, it's not advisable. It's going to impede traffic. You're going to need turn lanes because of the, uh, because of this. It don't, at the location of that gas station, there's only, there's five fire hydrants, and none of them are close to it except for one on Elm. There's, there's serious school traffic and everything else that goes through there. So you need to reconsider this altogether.
Any other members of the public that'd like to come forward at this time? Seeing none?
Yes.
Uh, seeing none, uh, we'll move on. Before we move on, we're going to have, uh, City Attorney White, address a comment that was made during public comment, so we get it on the record that the city is doing something. So, Mr. White?
So I, I agree with the Shablon's that the public, I think, has a right to know kind of what's going on in terms of the Johnsons and the money that it's costing, because we're involved in litigation that's not covered by risk management, that's quite costly. Um, at the last meeting, um, the city manager and, and I approached the, uh, Mr. and Ms. Johnson and offered to try to get their water turned on if they could at least make a payment of five hundred dollars. And then we would potentially go back to try to get the city council to waive all the penalties and things of that nature. There has not been a time during this entire process where there's been an offer to make a payment, and that makes it really difficult because the system has to pay for itself and, um, we're not, and we're not in a position as a city to be able to offer services for free. And so that creates an inherent challenge and it creates a, a problem that ultimately gets borne by the ratepayers and having to absorb the cost of having their service shut down as well as the time and effort that goes into trying to, to resolve the issue satisfactorily. I think maybe the city manager's in a bit better position to give a rough idea at least of what the, I don't remember what the amounts were.
I think they owe about twenty-six hundred dollars. That's just base pay. That's no penalties or interest. But of record two is they've entered into at least three previous contracts with previous city managers and defaulted on each one. So it's not that we're not willing to work with them. We've offered in every way that we can, but we have to have some kind of a working issue. They have to pay their own fair share. It's not fair with the tax pay.
They have to pay.
Fairs to pay, pay their way.
And so the meeting that they requested, so we're clear, it was a, it was a meeting that we thought, based off of what we said here, that I would be here, that they would be here, Lori would be here, they could bring anybody they wanted. It was our understanding that was going to be a meeting to make a payment on the, towards the utility bill, and it turned into, um, a protest of the fact that they had to make a protest for the cert- the pay. They, they were protesting that they had to make a payment or, for, of any kind.
So I think that, that just about covers it, so.
I want to make one more comment of only that he based it that was biased. There was four people in attendance. There was actually five people. There was our deputy city attorney, myself, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, and then they brought their neighbors. So they, they had the opportunity to bring anybody that they wanted, legal counsel or anybody. They did bring their neighbor with them, so they, they did have an unbiased witness there.
Yep. Thank you.
Consent calendar.
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar. And these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Anybody have anything they want to pull out of the council?
Anybody have anything they want to pull out of the council? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve consent calendar is posted.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Vera.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yep.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Reports and presentation from staff, state of the Atwater Police Department presentation by Chief, do you want the, are you gonna do it from there?
I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of Atwater community that's here present, I'm Mike Salvatore, I'm your new police chief, and what a whirlwind the last six weeks have been.
Haven't they?
They've been, yeah, this, you guys know how to show a chief a good time, that's for sure. So, I've been here six weeks, I've had a chance to talk to every single employee of the Police Department, they all got an hour with me, very good conversation, and with that, and me walking around people's workspaces and going out and talking to community members all over the place, anybody that take a look and listen, I've come to the conclusion that we got a lot of work to do and we're gonna do it in five different areas. Tonight, we're gonna talk about personnel infrastructure, the fleet, IT, and then I'm gonna unveil what I would like to do over the next four years. We have twenty-four sworn and eleven non-s sworn, that places us at about point eight officers per thousand, the average is about one. Eleven non-sworn are deployed to dispatch, animal control, records, and that's the new organizational chart, that's the way your Police Department will be deployed. As you can tell, I'm at the top of the organizational chart, I'm the number one guy on any pleadings. I have a vacant executive assistance position, and we'll talk about that in the master plan. Basically, I'm gonna function in two roles, I'm gonna function as your department head, I'm also gonna function as your CEO, second-in-command, involved in personnel and internal affair matters, purchasing, the budget. I have five sergeants positions, they're deployed across four patrol shifts and investigations. I have a dispatch supervisor deployed over dispatch and records. They will all have ancillary duties, they will all perform some administrative function, whether it be fleet maintenance, post-training, FTO, scheduling, procurement, sergeants, but all five of them are direct reports, all six of them are direct reports to me. We meet on a monthly basis. Oops, wrong one. The organizational chart, as it see, as given there, is based on all twenty-five positions being filled, we have no injuries or people sick, and the patrol shifts are twelve hours in length. Oops, wrong one. Our infrastructure, we're based out of City Hall here, it's a building that was built in the nineteen-sixties, it looks sorta like that on a good day when the sun's out. It has administration of the department inside, the patrol unit is here, records and dispatch is here. Then we have a location out of Station Forty-two behind Buhat Colony High School, was built in two thousand and seven, and our detective unit is there.
Why?
Because there is no room in the inn here at headquarters. There's no room at the inn. So, our headquarters issues are very, very simple, the age of the facility, it was never designed for computers, it was never designed for modern equipment, electronics, the whole nine yards, it was basically based as an office yard. It has a lack of environmental capacity, what that means is the air conditioning and heating systems inside that...
Chief, you gotta keep it on the microphone.
Oh, okay. The, the air conditioning and heating systems weren't set up for modern computer systems. The server room can get over a hundred degrees, that's never good for thousands of dollars of electronic equipment. It's got a very, very, well, our, there you go, let me get away from this one then. The security of our patrol room is an issue, there really wasn't a patrol room built into the Police Department. A former council took an atrium out of City Hall, put four walls around it, put a roof over the top of it, and that's a patrol room. It's not connected to the rest of the building, which is kind of not a good way to operate your Police Department. We've all heard about the rumors of the evidence room, well, the evidence room is too small, it is probably one-third the size of this room, it is not set up well at all to house evidence, and of course, we're at two locations, that's never good for, for that. Station Forty-two, it's a beautiful facility, it's a great little substation, our detectives have a lot of the right equipment there. Unfortunately, the connectivity to the internet there is lacking due to the infrastructure, and of course, it's three and a half miles away, so it makes it very, very difficult for us to coordinate our efforts. Our fleet, when I saw this number, I went, what? I got twenty-five, thirty-six people total, but I got forty-two cars. The average age of the vehicles in the fleet are about thirteen years old, they are aging, a lot of Crown Victorias are still in our fleet, and those have come out of fleets over the last five years in droves. Our average mileage of the vehicles in our fleet are one hundred and twenty-five thousand, I worked fleet when it came to, at Madera, and these are the time that these cars go out of service. You definitely don't want older vehicles trying to roll 911 calls, especially at high speeds. We drive an average of thirty thousand miles per year per car, that is very, very similar to what a deputy sheriff would drive. Even though we've got six square miles, we do, with the calls for service and the number of calls for service that we have, we drive a lot. Our information technology, I'm kind of a geek at heart, our desktop computers are a mixture of Windows XP, Windows Seven, and Windows Ten. Windows XP has been out of operational service in most agencies back in the mid-two thousands, it is not secure as far as DOJ compliance, our Windows Seven computers will become obsolete in December, when Microsoft cuts off support to that, and the minute that happens, those computers will no longer be allowed on a DOJ CGIS system. Our Panasonic toughbooks that we put in patrol cars are also at the end of their service lives, Panasonic quit selling those two years ago. They are also Windows Seven machines that have to be upgraded. Our servers are a mixture of IBM mainframe computers and some Microsoft products, depending on what system that they're operating against, our records management and our CAD system has got hardware issues related to the IBM mainframe that it's running on, that IBM is no longer servicing either. We're within nine months of that, end of that service life for maintenance and parts. Our DOJ issues are all revolved around this network environment that we're in that is aged and must be replaced, and then finally, the radio issues, the County of Merced operates our radio system for us, we just use subscriber equipment. Well, they're getting ready to perform a huge upgrade, it's in progress right now, should be done by the end of November, about half the radios on our police cars don't, will not be able to operate on the new network. Therefore, I have that issue coming our way. Our, let's talk about how we're gonna get there, okay? I've got a plan, failure to plan as Councilman Raymond, we put, is a plan to fail, I have a plan. So, let's talk about our personnel. To move our personnel to the area where we're at least one per thousand, it's not gonna be done overnight. We can do it in a number of different ways, but I've hit the ground running, we're developing a new training and HR program to help develop our personnel, whether it be administratively, whether it be tactically, whether it be just the skills to do your job, they do comply with post standards, but post standard is the bare minimum standard. For us to be great, we've gotta make things better. For the next fiscal year, I'm going to request from the council during the budget process that the two part-time CSO positions that we have in the Police Department be funded to full-time status. What that does for the department is it allows us to do seven-day-a-week animal control, which is sorely needed here in town, and it gives me overlap that allow us to take care of our evidence room. Most, most people have, well, when are you gonna get your secretary, chief? Well, I'm not gonna ask for it right away. The CSO positions are more important than me having a secretary. I'm pretty self, yeah, I'm a pretty self-sufficient guy, ask my boss. But there is a need for that type of position in the Police Department to assist with procurement and personnel issues and routing paper from point A to point B, a non-sworn person is cheaper than a sworn one. So in January, I'm gonna ask for that position to come back into the budget, reason why January is, is it allows the city's financial situation to catch up with the addition of the new positions. If you get a full-time position at the halfway point of a fiscal year, it only costs you half as much, and then it allows you to build into your budget, see where you are financially, and, and, and do that in an efficient manner. Two years from now, this process is already started, I have five sworn supervisors, a department of this side needs a second-in-command. What I'm, what I'm starting to do now is I'm starting to develop the five supervisors to take the test. The test will be unlike any test they've ever seen before. The ability to look into the future and be visionary and be able to manipulate multiple year budgets down the road is a skill that our supervision does not have. Well, it's my job to teach them. And I'm looking at either fiscal year twenty-one or twenty-two to put, put these people together, prepare them for that exam, and to eventually have a second-in-command here. And then finally, putting more people on the road is always what the community wants. If I can keep my positions filled properly, you're gonna see a difference in deployment already, but there are a couple of different areas that I think that more police officers would be a benefit to us, whether it be in traffic enforcement, whether it be in specialized problem-oriented policing-type work, but cops are expensive. A police officer fully, fully weighted costs you over a hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm looking at fiscal year twenty-three to add two more police officer positions to patrol, to enhance night and weekend staffing. Our infrastructure, I've got three projects here on the infrastructure, two of them I'm gonna try to do relatively quickly. One of them is the lobby project, which is going out to RFP as we speak, that will relocate our lobby, provide some security on the east side of this building, and it'll provide an enhanced customer service experience for anybody coming to the counter. Our evidence room project is, we'll expand the evidence room by one-third, I have a wasted space hallway down the middle of the Police Department that we're gonna use, that is also out to RFP, we should get some cost estimates here in the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Also, we're gonna put some space-saving equipment inside for storage to maximize the volume of the room. And then this is the one that everybody kinda asks, you know, what was I smoking when I put this one up? And it was not cannabis. I'm gonna propose a new headquarters, twelve thousand square feet, that will bring all of us back under the same roof. This is a three-to-five-year project, it can be done, we already own the land, that's half the battle. So, again, our lobby project, we're looking at public facility fees, the City Manager and I are going through the budget as we speak, we should have, like I said, cost estimates in about the next hundred and twenty days. Larger evidence room, new equipment to maximize space, we're looking for that same type of money, we figure these projects are gonna cost us anywhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars. And I've done this before. New police headquarters will address all the needs in three grand jury reports, a post-executive audit of the department, and the DOJ evidence report. What you see here is the floor plan for the Huron Police Department, six thousand square feet, we need about double that size. It allows for all our services to be under one roof, and it was sent, it's going to be sent to Washington DC with the mayor and the City Manager and the mayor pro tem in The fleet. In the consent calendar, we just approved a, a consent calendar item that will allow me to identify the surplus assets in the department and sell them at auction using auctioneer services like the ones that were just here in town on Saturday. I, I've done, I've used Mulrooney's in the past, they're gonna be my choice. I wanna lower the average age and mileage of the in-service fleet in the next two fiscal years, to do that, we're gonna need four marked cars and four unmarked cars. I did fleet in a former life, and we're gonna put all our cars on a fleet replacement schedule, I have one from a fleet manager in South Carolina, and it, it, it will tell us almost to the fiscal year when we need to replace these things. We're gonna fund these, this particular master plan three different ways, I've used all three of them, lease purchasing, you can get cars fully equipped, pay for all the equipment and the car in the lease. It's a great way to save your money and a great way to flip a fleet relatively rapidly. The general fund is the general fund, of course, and then, on my first night, the night I was sworn in, we did a board item to ask for air pollution control grant money in their public benefits grant program, that grant is at APCD, we're waiting for the contracts, soon as we get the contracts, we'll rotate through, get a purchase order, get that started. IT, we started that on day two. We're in the process of replacing all the desktop computers in the Police Department, we'll get that done in the next three fiscal cycles. We're using federal grant funds and some general fund money, it's not about how much money you have, it's, like I've said at two breakfast chiefs and here in front of the council, spend money with purpose, we're gonna do that, we've already started. Replacing the patrol laptop computers, also in the same three funding cycles, if the lease program goes, those cars will come with new computers in them, leased in the program. Federal grant funding, of course, we get a block grant from the federal government through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, we're gonna use that, and then whatever we need left is general fund. Replacing servers are, we've got a server that needs to be replaced really bad, I think I already have the money for that, I'm, I'm waiting for the last quarter to come through, we'll take care of that. I think I already have the money for that. I'm, I'm waiting for the last quarter to come through. We'll take care of that. We gave CAD and RMS. There are ways to leverage the work of others. Whether it be joining a county-wide system or joining somebody else's regional system. There are some other options. I've started that project also. I've done that work before in two former lives. I've deployed three CAD systems and three RMSs. That's a six-to-nine-month process that we're going to take over the next two fiscal years. And then, of course, replacing the obsolete radio equipment. We can do that in the vehicle leases also. We can also do that with state homeland security grant funding, in which I just asked for residual state money from the operational areas that can't spend it. That, that request and emails went out today through our assemblyman in Sacramento. Counsel, I've completed. 11 minutes. Sorry, Laurie. I'll take your questions.
Let's open it up to the public first, and see what they have to say, and then we'll bring it to the dais. You can come up to the podium. And, you could use that mic. Well, have them come up to the podium, chief. Then you can stand up here and...
All I want to know is where's the property for the new police station?
Right behind us.
That's good.
Right behind us.
Thank you.
Actually, why don't you elaborate on a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're sitting on about an acre and a third, maybe acre and a half. There's a master plan for this site that was put together in the 70s. Never completed.
So, there's another wing that goes where the community development building's at?
Yes. So, plus, we have a significant amount of property directly behind us, too. And, I put 27,500 square feet on an acre and a third in the city of Madera, right next to the airport. And there's plenty of room here for that. Plenty of room. And land acquisition is one of the most costliest portion of any new police structure.
One, I don't, are there repeaters on the system now? Is that a problem between here and Merced? And when you build the new station, are you going to have your own control center?
We will program all of those types of things in. The repeater system...
Chief, repeat the question so we can understand.
Oh, he's asking about the radio system and the repeaters and whether a new building will have a control point inside the new building. The answer to that question is yes. The county is moving their radio system to provide better coverage to the county. They're at, they're, they're on a mountaintop just above the city of Mariposa. Little Bullion. They're moving into Big Bullion. That moves it up about 750 feet, which will give you better coverage on the valley floor. They're also moving the Pacheco Peak repeaters on the west side up higher, too, to fill in that hole. And of course, we have control point here now. That won't go away. We, we got it.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public comment on this and bring it back to the dais. Ms. Vieira, you have any questions?
Thank you very, well, no, I didn't have a question, but I had a comment.
Well, go ahead.
I think that you've put together a really nice plan here, so it'll be exciting to be here for a portion of seeing that unfold. And I know that our department has, our officers have long deserved this. And, just kind of the general feel that we get from them is they're very, very proud and very glad to have you here, to see someone take stock in them as a department and have vision for their future. Feels good for them. So, thank you very much. And this is really an exciting, an exciting day.
You're welcome, and wait for the rebrand.
Mr. Raymond?
I just kind of have to echo what Councilman Vieira said. And you mentioned on the slides, there was 43 vehicles in your fleet?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
In various states of, from, from cars that have no wheels to cars that have been parked out in the sun for 10, 15 years to, I mean, I, literally, I drove from place to place to place and, and went into every single employee's workspace. And I, it, it's just interesting. It's, it's not of any failure of any one person. It was just, it's, it's, it's just, they needed some love. And, for, for me, I'm used to, I'm used to systems. And, and putting systems into place and watching them and then teaching them and then teaching people how to use them. And, my, my city manager, she, she kind of looks at me like almost every day and just kind of shakes her head because I'm not sure that I don't already have the money to do about 85% of this. And that we've had the money to do 85% of this. All we would have had to do was do it, point to it, just do it. So, so, I'm fully confident that in the next 18 months, about 50% of the list items on that list will be accomplished. We're working really hard, and my people are working really hard. And I want to thank the community and the council because they've been, you guys have all been really, really good to me. So...
Continue.
I don't have much more. I was just thinking, the mayor and I went out to Public Works and we saw approximately 20 units out there, and as you said, various states of disrepair. And so I didn't know if that was included in this number.
That is included, including the five cars at Station 2 and the ones that I brought over here. And, we're, 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 we're going to, we're going to clean it up.
I'm, I'm excited, and I know you bring in excitement and enthusiasm that the department's needed for a long time. So, thank you.
Ms. Vieira?
How many cars do we have in our fleet that are still, that still have enough life on them? First of, okay, question number one. How many, what's the bare minimum we need to continue to function? And do we have enough to fulfill that immediate need? How soon are we going to say, hey, we need another vehicle today? I mean, our work?
Yes. The answer to your question is yes. We do have enough vehicles to do what we need to do. That's not the issue. The issue is, is they're all coming to end of life at the same time. That's what causes the issue. My car, for instance, is the chief of police. His car is 13 years old. It's got 180,000 miles on it. None, 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 none of, none of the unmarked cars that detectives or non-sworn people would drive have less than 150,000 miles on them. Cars don't last forever. So, that's why the lease purchase piece, Councilman Vieira, is, is one of the avenues that I would like to explore, and I'm getting quotes from that now, is that's a quick way of flipping the fleet, giving you a steady budget number over the next three to five years, and then buys us time to really implement a fleet replacement policy where instead of having to buy six or seven cars at once, we're buying them ones and twos.
Anybody else see? Mr. Abrams?
Very nice presentation, and, yeah, my questions are pretty much just going to be short. Tech-wise, you're making sure that it's going to be pretty much future-proof, correct? Not just so we're buying something now because we can afford it and up two years down the line, it's a piece of crap.
You, you, you know what, Councilman Abrams? You sound just like me on the phone with the security provider for the in-car mobiles, right? That security provider was contracted by the city, and, and they were being paid, and they stopped getting paid in 2013. So now, when I went to try to upgrade the system, it can't happen. We're a new client to them again, so we're starting from scratch. So, yeah, the future-proof it. Computers need to go on the same type of replacement schedule that cars are on. You know, you're looking at a server, a server's lifespan inside a municipal facility, if everything works properly and the environmentals are there, is 36 to 48 months. And if you're on a replacement cycle, that 36 to 48-month window, and you purchased the proper warranties, and you're on a consistent platform, then you're swapping them out in ones and twos. Unfortunately, this time, we got to swap them out 10 at a time. And we've got the grant money to make those things happen, and I have resources to make those things happen. It's just, that's just not something I want to come in front of the council and say, I need 10 PCs. Or, I need three servers. I, I want to be able to say, okay, we're in fiscal year 21. Server X is coming offline. We need to budget and, and move that forward. But yes, Microsoft changes like we change our shirts.
Completely understand. For me, the quicker the better, especially if you have XP systems that...
Oh, yes, I've got three of those.
Yeah.
Chief, stay this way a little bit so you stay on camera.
Yeah, no, I, I've got three of those. I've took one of them offline. We're taking the other two offline here in the next 30 days.
Okay. And for the vehicles, so does it necessarily need to be a laptop? Can, can there be a tablet?
We're looking at all options.
Okay.
What I'm trying to leverage on our current patrol fleet that's out there is they made some decisions on how the car was equipped. So, I'm tied to the laptop in those 10 vehicles. That doesn't mean that we don't go to tablet solution. Dodge has got a real innovative piece of equipment that allows you to bury the computer in the trunk of the vehicle and display it in the dash of the vehicle now, sort of like a Tesla. There's, there's lots of ways to do this.
All right, my last one.
Yes, sir.
With a new facility, please tell me you're going to have an adequate space for the guys that have a break room.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
I, I feel for them. During 12-hour shifts, you, you need somewhere to go, and it looks like we don't have anywhere right now.
No, we, we're wedged in there, guys. I mean, that building, when that building was built, Atwater PD was, Atwater PD was 12 officers. We got 25. I mean, yeah, it, 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 yes, there'll be a break room.
Councilman Raymond?
So, chief, I want to go back. One thing I've brought up to every chief so far, since I've been here in four years, which that number is staggering. What I want to see at some point, sooner rather than later, is adding one to two bodies from the general fund to the department. When Measure H was passed, I think we had 34 officers. We're down to 25.
Yes, we are.
And so, is there a way, or do you have an idea? Because I mean, the first time you're asking for bodies, it's in like 2023 fiscal year. And so, that's a long ways out. I think, I don't know how we can do it, but I would like to help you get back up to full staffing.
You know, Council, Mayor Pro Tem, Raymond, that really depends on the financial situation of the city. If the financial situation of the city improves, of course, I'm willing to move things forward. I haven't been here long enough to be comfortable with saying, okay, counsel, you're, you're going to have a $330,000 surplus in the general fund that is available for law enforcement. Okay, I'll spend the 330 this way, this way, this way, this position, this position, this position. I'm, I'm, I'm coming to the fact that I want to make sure that I propose to you a, one, a budget that is fiscally responsible, two, one that I can execute, and three, maximizes our effect in public safety. That will take me a year.
Are we, are we looking at reinstituting the reserve program with the level ones, send them out on patrol sologium? That'd be before. We had a great program in place that was able to help the officers out.
I have six people go into backgrounds, and I got interviews on Thursday.
Beautiful.
Vieira?
Go with John.
Sure?
Yes.
I wanted to give John the floor when he's ready to go. All right, John.
Well, Chief, I want to thank you for a comprehensive, complete, and exciting plan. And, these guys took all my questions. Other than, you said you didn't have a patrol room. What goes on in a patrol room?
Well, I mean, that's, that's our patrol, patrol guys' home, right? They start their shifts there, they end their shifts there, they write reports in there. It's not connected to the rest of the agency. So, here's a, here's a for example. The gentleman in the back of the room, he goes on a call for service and he collects evidence. Well, he'll bring them to the patrol room to try to properly package it and box it up and get it ready to go. Well, he has to then leave the patrol room, go down a hallway through two locked doors to go to the evidence lockers that are 65 feet away. That's not efficient use of his time. It's just not. Those things should be co-located. Evidence room should be right off, right off the patrol room where, in a smaller agency like this one, where, where less steps, maximum use of, of time and effort, get them back out on the streets. It was one of the weaknesses in the, in some of the reports that I've read. So, designing something around those types of things is what you want to do. The Madera Patrol Room was right around the corner. You went out two doors and you were right there in the evidence hallway where you could package all your stuff. And then the evidence room was right on the other side of that. So, I've designed one of these buildings. I will take you guys on a tour of it when the time comes. It was kind of my most favorite project. I didn't think I'd like building buildings, but I actually did like building that one. And it was, it was probably, until we build this one, it'll be my shining moment.
John, do you have anything else?
I'm glad, thank you. I'll give them for Shendy.
Cindy?
I just want to say that, where you made the comment about spending money with purpose, that is refreshing. I know this council and the previous council has asked over and over and over again for some kind of an itemization of the police department's budget and has yet to be seen. So, when we see a line item of $60,000 for maintenance or care, we have no idea what that is. So, I'm glad to hear you say there is money in there. Maybe it was allocated, never used, don't know. But, again, I've been here two and a half years and have probably asked for it. I know Brian's asked for it, Paul's asked for it, the previous council asked for it. So, it's good to see that you've got your finger on the button, watching that, and that you can successfully spend the money, we're hoping, with purpose.
And what you'll see with, if, if, I'm not sure how we run the budget presentations here, but I will be fully prepared to explain where these services and supplies line items go and how they fit within the master plan. Because, you're right. And I'm teaching my troops this, too, is the amount of money is never the issue. It is, what's the priority for spending the money that we have? And are we getting the most bang for the buck? And are we, are we making sure that we've looked at every avenue possible to maximize efficiency? So, and vendors are being asked very, very tough questions. So, and vendors are being asked very, very tough questions. I know our CAD and RMS vendor is, is really nervous right now, because he can't answer questions that I want answered. So it is what it is.
So I just want to let everybody know that, one, thank you for the presentation, awesome job, great job. The chief and I have been working side by side, I've been putting in a lot of hours along with the rest of the council. We've met with our congressman, our assembly member, our senator, and our local sheriff. And these meetings and the time that we're putting into this, that Chief Salvador got here, he sat down, and actually before he even arrived here, he started with the footprint of the city. He showed up, he mapped it out, he started thinking, before he was even hired, what's the best use of space? Because this is an abnormally tiny, tiny facility that's grossly outdated. So he started that plan, then he came in and he identified other things. He went through the grand jury report, the DOJ report, the post reports, and really addressed the administrative side of things, along with the budget side of things, along with reaching out to the other member that I just discussed. And he's, he's actually making it what we call it rain money. And two of the three meetings, I won't say how much money we've, we've been able to shake down, but we've gotten a substantial amount of money, and he is right, he's finding areas in his budget that could be better used, that he might have supplies for already or It's really refreshing to see that. And then to create the energy in the atmosphere, our building official and city manager said, I think there's a set of plans that we did back in the sixties that never got built. So that could save us some money, and the creative thinking, because the, the trailer that's out there is the old job trailer from the wastewater treatment plant that the city houses its engineering and planning services and building services in. So talk about life of service and how long you can use something for, that's been obsolete for the last ten years. The vehicle replacement program the chief's talking about, I was out there with Raymond today, Councilmember Raymond today, and twenty-two cars are junk. Four or five are totaled. Most of them are missing seats, doors, wheels, they're just out there in a derelict state. Why we hold on to them that long is ridiculous. The chief's put on the consent agenda tonight, surplusing those items, try to capture whatever revenue he can for that. Maybe he buys two or three, or ten or twenty radios, but we've got thousands and thousands of dollars of equipment that we're just letting rot out there, and he's gonna surplus that and put that back in his budget this year, so. Really innovative stuff, and for those that are worried that we're gonna go out on a spending spree, we said three times tonight that we're living within this year's budget. He's finding monies. We're reaching out to other agencies that are also granting us some severely needed funds, a large amount. So it's a collaborative effort, and it's what the community asks for, and this is our first dog and pony show of what's about to come. So I really appreciate it, Chief.
You'll, you'll see it every year. We'll, we'll let the community know where we are and where we're going. I've got a good working relationship with my members here in the media, and I'm fired Six weeks ago, when I took the oath, I was excited. Now ask Lori. I'm like the Energizer Ben right around here, then nobody can keep up with me. My troops don't get it, they're starting to come around. I see smiles on people's faces that haven't had smiles on them in years. I think we're well-received in the general public.
I think your coffee, your coffee is going really well.
Uh, yes, I had twenty-five people at my last breakfast at the Chiefs, we packed grannies. That was awesome. Our next one is at Brooks Ranch on Wednesday, the first Wednesday, not the first Tuesday, but the first Wednesday, we'll be at Brooks Ranch, and a veterans group invited me to do breakfast at the Chiefs at the VFW Hall in July, for July, the July Fourth Celebration, which was really, really cool. I've never had that happen. We are out there. I now eat, drink, sleep at water. So we're, we're having a good time.
Great, well, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
General Services Manager, Peretta, resolution approving budget amendment regarding traffic signal interconnection project and awarding a contract to Tim Paxton's Pacific Excavation, Inc. for construction of the project. Mark, you want to take over?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Back on October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, the city council authorized a call for bids for construction, to construct a traffic signal for the interconnection of Whitway and Olive Avenue. A raised medium for Applegate Road, an interconnect synchronization of traffic signals of Bell Lane, Bell Drive, Commerce Avenue, Applegate Road, Olive Avenue, and Whitway to improve traffic flow. On Tuesday, November twentieth, twenty eighteen, two bid proposals were received, opened and read aloud and totaled and reviewed for responsiveness. By adopting Resolution Number Thirty-eighty-nine, approving budget amendment number six, amending the twenty-eighteen-nineteen fiscal year budgeting regarding the traffic signal internet, interconnect project, this will be awarding the general construction contract in the form of approved by the city attorney to Tim Paxton's Pacific Excavation of Elk Grove, California, for the construction of the project fourteen-two. This contract will be five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-three dollars in order to get this project done.
And funding source?
Funding source is going to be...
Lori has it here.
Yeah, general fund, RSTP funds.
Mark, Lori's got it here.
So M-CAG has found additional funding source for this. It will increase, increase our local budget amount to, I believe, fifty-five or...
Right.
Fifty, fifty-five thousand, but they will kick in the additional funds that we needed to make this project. This project came in overbid, and because we're on point with a lot of our other contracts, they were willing to go to bat for us and give us, throw additional funding on the project.
And this project's fully funded, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any members of the public like to come forward and speak at this time on this item? Seeing none, you gonna come forward or no?
I'm just curious.
Okay, we'll keep it open. Come to the podium, please. State your name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Amran, thirty-five, sixty-one, Emily White. I'm just curious, this median with the purpose of it is, the one that was just built here right on Bellevue and Schaefer, right for our new gas station, if we kind of look at the edge of that cement, like people in Atwater kind of don't know how to drive, and it's pretty much already beat to you-know-what, so I'm curious what that's gonna create over in that situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, this particular median, this whole project was developed in twenty-fourteen by our traffic engineer, and one of the concerns that was levied at that time is even got more substantial over time, is many people have noticed that when they take off, it's only supposed to be a right-hand turn only next to seven-eleven, going back on to Applegate. While I'm sure pretty much everybody in this room has noticed, people over the years, they take a left, and they go against traffic. And so this is gonna help curtail some of that, and, and if everything goes right, we won't have the fender benders and the little things that we've been having over the years. So, so this medium is going to stop that and make it safer for everyone.
I want to, I want to comment on your comment. What you were referring to was the new median in front of seven-eleven on Bellevue. It's going to be upgraded with the correct marking and striping so that people are more aware of it instead of blending into the black top. So there's been a few bumps and bruises over there. It is, and it's physically, it's no wider than the double-yellow line that was there, but physically it's there, so you don't have any room to go, you're gonna hit it. So staff's working on, working with the contractor at seven-eleven to finalize those upgrades. They're not complete yet.
Yes. As a matter of fact, we made contact this morning with the contractor, and they're getting, getting on it this week till you have it all done.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to Mr. Cale.
So Mark, that medium's gonna be there until now the chief can't make that quick one out, too, right? Because they do that, they're the ones who are the most, that I see all the time.
At this particular moment, Councilman Cale, I'll have no comment to that question.
Maybe, maybe I shouldn't have brought it up. Sorry.
Councilman Ambries? Do we have an estimate begin and end date of when this is gonna be completed?
Right now, no. The way it's gonna work is when they get the, they've got the bid, then they're gonna get their, basically their plans together and start making some end dates on it. We've got thirty, they got thirty days to come back with the projection dates of the jobs themselves. Right now, my city engineer and our assistant engineer is gonna meet with them and do a conference and stuff, and once we get those timelines, we'll share them with, with council.
Okay.
Councilman Raymond? Councilwoman Viera, you have nothing. Well, I, I do, I have about thirty-five minutes worth of stuff, but I'm not gonna comment either, because it sounds like a good project and about time. We started this a few years ago, and with a few changes around here and better communication with staff, that I, I think you guys all heard what Lori said at the beginning of the meeting, we were able to secure additional funding through M-CAG. We're working with our neighbors and our other agencies that help us, that manage these type things, and Atwater's starting to see the rewards of that, so great job, staff.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
You know, I have, I have one other thing, Mark. When I was doing the research on this, I was so glad to hear that they're going to sequence all these lights together, because that's annoying.
Yes.
To sit there on top of the overpass and see the light at Atwater Boulevard change and know there's no way I'm gonna get to it.
John, you need, you need to clarify that question, because we have a lot of signals in town, and a lot of them are in default. So what happens when it goes in default? Because I agree with John, it's gonna be really refreshing to know we're gonna be able to go, but when that light trips out, who are we gonna train or make sure we have on staff to make sure we keep this project correctly operated and ran, not to spend all this money, put it in, and then two weeks later, this one's in default, that one's in default, and the whole system doesn't work? So that's what John really wanted to ask.
That was a good, good question, Councilman. Yes, I, I would have to defer to the gentleman to my right on that particular, because they were, you know, Mayor was absolutely right. We can do a bunch of great things for the city, but we, we don't have a way of maintenance in it and keeping everything going the way it's supposed to and flowing the way it's supposed to, eventually it'll fail.
And what the chief said earlier is, you need to piggyback off of what he's saying, because we've got it, we gotta take something new, and we don't let it turn it into a broken-down relic the first three months and the first three years. Training, 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 identify, we need to have staff step up, find out who's gonna be responsible, who's going to training, who's backup with this project. So before it gets built, we expect Public Works to have those answers. And Brian, you want to make a comment?
I was gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to Pacific Excavation and see if we can get some training from them.
Even if we need to secure some additional funding through the, the gas tax and the RSTP, to make sure Brian gets his staff trained, so that he's not only got himself, but whoever else you need done to, so that this is a great project when we get it done.
Yes, we'll go for the look into it and get that done.
Okay, motion from the council, please?
I'll make the motion to approve their recommendation for this project.
I'll second.
Motion by Cale, second by Ambries.
Raymond?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great job, thank you, guys. Intern Public Works Director, Brian Shaw, waiving the formal bid process, resolution approving budget amendment, and awarding a purchase agreement to EKova Water Technologies for Carbon Media Replacement Services at Well Fifteen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. If you know Well Fifteen, we were treating DBCP, and now we've switched it over to treating the one-two-three TCP.
Along with the DBPC? You're treating them both?
No, we've switched it. The DBCP is no longer detected in that well. That's why we were able to switch it over to just one-two-three TCP. We've switched it out, it's been about a year ago, and now it's, the end of its life, it's not absorbing it, it's starting to raise up, and the MCL is coming out of it. So we need to do a change out on all four vessels. So we stay within compliance of being, and it's new, it's no parts per million, per trillion coming out of the vessels. We're staying below the MCL right now, but it's at the threshold to where we're gonna be breaking through if we don't get it changed out.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Any members of the public like to come forward at this time? We have a member, state your name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Amran, thirty-five, sixty-one, Emily White. I'm under the understanding we're only going to change it in one well, and since we have such an abundance of money, and our police chief has so graciously illustrated that, what about us getting our well water cleaned up, guys? Let's give it one for the team.
Okay.
Okay? We're gonna think about that, right?
No, we're doing, we're not thinking.
Oh, okay, I appreciate that, because I just want to be able to let my grant...
Don't, don't sit down just yet.
Oh, okay.
So what Director Shaw was talking about was DBPC came in, we treated it, and it was, what is the DBPC from?
I just care about TCP, I don't care about the other.
But we, we, we were able to put in some vessels at the expense of the, the previous water contamination lawsuit that they lost, whoever contaminated it. So now we have that good equipment, we're not buying new equipment, and we're able to change out the media that's inside of that, that treated for that contaminant, to a more sophisticated carbon, granulated activated carbon...
With coconut.
With coconut carbon...
Very excited.
To remove the one-two-three TCP that we currently have in our water system...
That we need to go away.
That we're gone from the MCL of parts per hundred to parts per billion to parts per trillion...
Trillion, right.
Which a trillion's a lot, but we're still working that way. So staff's made the aggressive approach to do something about it. So they did, they ran it for a year, and now they're all fouled, and this is just the maintenance thing to replace that dirty stuff and put fresh carbon back in. And we're continuing with other sources to address the other well sites that are contaminated with that.
So we have a total of ten wells in our city?
Brian, can you...
Total of ten, we have eight online at this time.
Oh, okay, and so we're addressing just one well, though, right now?
Yeah, you talked to him.
I'm sorry.
This is the only well that we have the GAC on, the carbon filters.
Okay.
So that's a yes.
Okay. So with that looping system, how does that affect, even if it, even if we drop that TCP level in that one particular well, and it's looped around? I guess I just, I'm not understanding, how is it not interacting with the rest of the wells?
It does interact, it helps bring the contamination level down.
All of it down, on all of them?
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other members of the public like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the dials. Viera?
So from my understanding, it is the intention of the city to eventually have all of our wells treated with something similar to this. Won't they all eventually be...
I think Attorney White can address that probably the most eloquently without me giving up any of our game plan.
I think the goal would be to get all, all the wells and all the treatment done. I think, you know, we have to find a funding source in order to be able to do that, and so we're working on finding that funding source.
What are we currently in right now?
Excuse me?
Are we currently in any...
We're in discussions to find a funding source.
Okay, all right. So things are being done behind the scene that you don't get to see. Next question?
Discussion.
Councilman Raymond?
We're talking.
Councilman Raymond?
No, I have nothing.
Ambries?
Actually, I have a few things. First off, I'd like to know, so why are we, why are we not taking this to bid?
There's only really two companies in the state that do this, and we just went out to a... to just a proposal, we got the both proposals back, and you see Evoqua came out the lowest, and we have been using them when we did the DBCP. They've done quite a few train, change outs in the city since two thousand nine.
All right, um, my follow-up question is pretty much gonna be the same as I asked the last one. Do we have an estimate to begin and end date on this? When we're gonna start this? How long is it gonna take?
As soon as it's approved, we will get on their schedule, and if you look on their schedule, it takes, uh, like four days to remove and replace the carbon.
All right, thank you.
So, I, I can get you a date after we get it on the schedule. I can let you know when they're gonna start and finish.
Definitely appreciate that.
Great, looking for a, uh, motion or direction from the council?
I'll make a motion to waive the formal bid process, resolution approving a budget amendment and awarding a purchase agreement to the Carbon Media Replacement Services at Well 15 to EKova Water Technologies.
Check it.
Motion by Vera, second by Cale.
Vera?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
City manager reports and updates.
Mayor and city council, uh, before you is an item requesting a position of a project manager and asking for adoption of Resolution thirty-eighty-one dash nineteen, approving a budget amendment number to appropriate funding to add that position to, um, the, um, budget this fiscal year rather than wait till our new fiscal year, um, as well as adopting Resolution thirty-eighty-two, amending the classification plan regarding the project manager classification. Um, back on, uh, when we discussed our strategic planning session, uh, there were several items that were discussed. Um, several of them have to do with, um, technology-based items. Uh, I understand a IT person maybe wasn't the best person for this, but we've got a lot of projects, uh, that had, were discussed at that, uh, meeting, um, such as, actually the chief had several in his presentation alone tonight. Um, the server room, uh, replacing upgrade in-car computers, uh, our phone systems, uh, key card access, uh, maintenance support, improving, uh, public access and transparency to our, our website, and, uh, things, projects like this. In-house project manager would be able to manage the contract for the city's technology needs as well as an expanded daily level of service that we're not currently getting. And, in our motto of positive progress, we want to be proactive, not reactive. A lot of the things that we do on a day-to-day basis of, basis is reactive to issues or problems that come up. What we want to do is forward think and come up with, uh, solutions or, um, items, planning for the future. Uh, I'm not saying that this position will be a standalone position, there's obviously gonna be big projects that this person would manage, um, which would include possibly a hybrid for an expanded, uh, IT services to handle the large projects that would come up. Uh, but at least the city would have someone on our side doing the negotiating and getting the best pricing for, for the equipment that we are looking for. We would have a single point of contract and responsibility, and, um, let's see, I think that's pretty much it would, deliberate spending is, is what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public this time?
Good evening, everybody. I always say, coming up here going, can you pause what you're doing for a second? I actually want to request, possibly before you make a decision on this particular agenda item, if I could request a sit-down meeting. In three minutes, we're not gonna be able to talk about everything that you're looking to accomplish and what our backgrounds and skills are, but I can tell you that we currently manage sever, different, seven different cities locally. Um, we run as the full-time IT department, we do everything from budgeting, creating five-year plans, we have backgrounds with a lot of the stuff that, that the police chief is talking about, CAD, RIMS, NetMotion, so we have a background in doing those types of things. Two of the cities that we support, we've been supporting for over ten years. For the city of Newman, we actually completely unwound their dispatch through the county, because they were looking to save some money and move dispatch someplace else, so we had to work with the DOJ, we understand all the DOJ applications and all of that stuff as well. The city of Gustine just came on board a little less than a year ago, in the same sort of position you guys are in right now. Phones, websites, servers, and oh my gosh, how do we manage all this and get this stuff done? And we're in the tail end of getting them up to speed where they need to be. Uh, huge background in doing budgeting, so as, as part of what we do for the cities and, um, for the cities for support, is we not only create a five-year technology plan for the city, but then we also do yearly budgeting with all of the departments, and then bring all of that information back to, basically, council to go over, okay, where, where is the actual budget? These are the items they need, they're all broken down in kind of order of importance like no XP computers. Um, but I would love just a, a sit-down meeting where maybe the chief could sit in, Mr. Ambrose, I know that you have a background in technology, it'd be great to have you there. Um, Mrs. Waterman would love to have you there. Whoever would like to participate in that meeting, which would be a great opportunity for us to gather more information about really where you guys are at today and what your needs are. I mean, you're halfway through the battle to understand that you wanna forward think and not be reactive and be proactive. A lot of organizations don't think that way, and it's a huge process to get them there. So you're halfway there already, right? So, if I could come in, or my organization come in and save you guys money, oh, my time must be up. Um, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll, we'll have, uh, the city manager to get with you, and, and I'm sure they can work something out.
That'd be wonderful, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just if I can elaborate on his comments, I'm, I'm not saying that's not what we're looking to do, but we need a single source of, um, contact right now, there's nobody to oversee the city projects that we have. We have the chief doing a lot of his legwork on his own. There's projects that I've been doing, that Janelle's been doing, we need a, uh, and not just technology projects, this city could encompass, but will also include a technology component, not just a single source.
Okay, so I think what she's saying is it'd be a collaboration between the city and, and you guys, so it looks like a positive theme moving forward. Uh, any other members of the public like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, close the public comment, bring it back to the dais. Ambrose?
First, I'd be the first one you go to.
You are an expert.
I wouldn't say expert, but... What I wanna see is that not only are you gonna try to use the local people here, but I wanna see that you guys are actually reaching out, going, trying to get discounts from companies like CD, uh, CDWG, uh, you know, reach out to Dell, because they, they offer government discounts.
Yep.
I have corporate accounting.
There, there's other companies that, uh, that have offices somewhat local in Fresno, like Truxell and so forth. Uh, these are all, these are all companies that I know, we can even chat with local school district here and see where, where they're buying their tech from. This way, we're not spending outrageous, you know, outrageous money on, on equipment that shouldn't be that much. But with that said, well, that, that's pretty much all I have to say right now.
Before I call anybody else, I wanna comment on Danny's, uh, comment. I think it's important that, that you, um, you have a voice here in, in what you're proposing, it makes total sense, and I think after, however this shakes out tonight, if it goes that way or whatever, I'd like to see you be more hands-on with the city manager in those type of discussions. I think that's a great comment you just made, and I wanted to point that out before we moved on. Mr. Cale?
No, I, I'm good. Don't have any questions.
Vera?
So, just to kinda get clarification, this person would, or this position, would actually oversee, the IT department would, would be under the umbrella of this position? So the IT department would, we would still need someone for that? This is, this is something?
Yes, I would imagine it would be a hybrid.
Okay.
There will be day-to-day stuff that I would anticipate this person would be able to handle. We have issues that, right now, we have somebody coming in one day a week, so if we don't have it, they try to do it remotely or whatever, but we have somebody that could handle day-to-day. But larger projects, we would need an I, we would need an IT actually, similar to what we do with building. Uh, building, if he needs additional staffing or, or whatever to do inspections, we have a contract with a vendor to do that.
What is the, um, fiscal impact of this?
So, today, we're looking at an estimated of adding salary and benefits, fourteen thousand, that's through the, through the end of the year, but for the next fiscal year, um, approximately a hundred and eighty thousand. Now that would come, a lot of that would come from the IT, because we trimmed down that.
One eighty or one oh eight?
One eighty.
One eighty. And currently, right now, just for IT, what are we paying a year?
Oh goodness.
I'm sorry.
Um...
Or a month?
Well, just alone, a month, we're paying eleven thousand plus, and that's just basic, that's not any hardware, any equipment, and that's not the markup on the equipment that we purchase.
Okay. And we're getting, we have less than mediocre service and equipment.
Less than.
Less than mediocre. So obviously, I mean, to me, eleven thousand dollars a month seems huge to have mediocre service and mediocre equipment with, but with this salary, is that all in, like?
Yes.
That's all in? Okay.
And again, we'd have a forty-hour versus eight-hour, and we would have it flexed so that we're not paying overtime if they need to be here on the weekends or the evening to do police work, it would, that would be, it would be...
And when you came up with the salary, where did, where did that, did you compare to local cities around that have a similar position, or where, where did we come up with this?
Yes, that was actually in the, the mid-range, it wasn't even at the higher range, it was towards, towards the lower mid-range.
So, if we back it out, what is just the sal, what's the annual salary? If we back out like benefits and all of that, do you know? I'm sorry, Lori.
I didn't bring that sheet, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I do have that, I, I think I was trying to, um, make sure that I had those questions for the council.
I think that you may have actually sent it to me before, so I can...
It's about one thirty-two a year at the current rate.
I, I think, I, that's what I was thinking too, one thirty-two. Thank you.
Raymond?
So here's my concern is, we're looking at project manager, but everything, I keep hearing IT again. Um, if it's all IT, then maybe looking at a contract with a private company with it saying, we get a body here X amount of days a week. Um, but I, I don't know, I'm still going through it in my head here.
Well, I think by having a person on staff, you have a person that's vested to get the best prices for the city, they're going to be overseeing whenever we go out to bid or we, um, purchase equipment, you have to have a single contact, that's gonna be the city's contact, and it's not just IT, a big component will be technology-based, but we, granted, I mean, we have a lot of technology projects that were identified in your, um, workshop that, um, would need somebody to do the research on, to do, uh, go out to bid, to do the day-to-day for it.
At a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year, they better be able to do a lot.
Oh, I would expect.
Find me a unicorn.
Believe me, I would expect a lot, but it's not good use of the chief's time to be doing that, or my, my time.
No, I agree, I just have to figure out how to justify it to my district, you know, and that's, the, the trouble I'm having is with the, the salary amount, then having to go out in contract, uh, on top of that. So, you, I'm sure the mayor's got some things to say, so, come back to me.
Yes, um, thank you, Councilman Raymond. Also, um, I'm not a TI, IT guy, the chief's a, a geek with that stuff, and Danny, and Ryan always has to help me with my phone, but, um, I'm a good listener, and I, there's value to everything that we just talked about, about this position, and I, and I believe that I heard things correctly, that, um, we're gonna be able to retain our current IT people that are under contract, may not be at the full eleven thousand a month, but they're gonna be there, they're already in tune with DOJ and other things. The police chief talked earlier about, um, some money and things that come in through the PD that would pay for IT stuff through the PD, right, chief?
Yes.
So we have, there's, there's additional funding sources to this, I think, uh, the city manager's talking about attacking IT right now, and it's gonna kind of shake out and be okay after we get some new equipment. I think Councilman, uh, Ambrose is our budget watchdog on the hardware, the hard, physical equipment. Um, I'm very pleased what I heard here tonight, I think with a combination of public and private, that the city will win, and, and working with grant sources and other revenue streams that are coming in, this could be a big win for the city, and Councilman Raymond is right, you know, we wanna see results, not just add another position, so, and we're not ready to give up the private side yet. So as we do in engineering and planning and building, we have a contract engineer, but we have Mark that oversees the general services area, and this would be just the point of contact to make sure that we're having continuity. Is that what I understand?
But, I, I have one question. We're not maintaining the current IT people that we have right now, correct?
No, should this position be approved, it's, it will be my expectation that they will put together an RFP and we will go out to bid for...
Modified.
Modified version, hybrid version.
So really, when we take what we're spending right now, plus bringing in a little bit of, bringing in what we need, the special projects or, or whatever, we're really not going above what we're spending very much, but we're gonna go from less than mediocre to an efficient IT functioning city. So I know you have to spend a little to get it, and as long as we are going in a direction where we can finally get together, where we have sufficient internet, sufficient phones, and, 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 and just that, a sufficient, I, a city in a state of, of efficient, I'm not a, I'm not a computer guru. So, but I know that it doesn't run efficiently now, and we need it to be, to be efficient.
Is that a motion?
Um, no, I didn't make no motion, I was just getting out there and, um...
I, I got a, a quick comment here, uh, especially for Ms. Raymond over there. Uh, I totally get where you're coming from, um, I, I was there the first time that this was presented, so, the way I'm looking at it is, this, you can think of it as an IT director. An IT director will get their hands dirty for once in a while, but they're not gonna be your everyday grunt work. And that's, from my understanding, that's where this is gonna be the hybrid, and they're gonna bring in the outside people. Uh, money-wise, if we're only getting eight hours a week, and we pay eleven thousand a month, that's three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents an hour. If you do the math for a forty-hour a week, that's thirteen thousand dollars. If that, and that's if we were to stick in a kind, in this current situation that we're in now. We're already leaving ourselves open for cyber attacks with our Windows XP systems on any of our networks. We have so much more to lose now, and if we continue waiting, it, it could get a lot worse.
Well, we're not debating the companies, we're debating the...
The position, yes.
The position and the finances, is the thing, and that's, that's the trouble I'm still having, you know, cause now we created another position, where we already have the other IT position that was, uh, approved but not funded, but now it sounds like we're looking at another IT guy. And so that's, that's where I'm lost, in trying to come in here, because I want what's best for the city, and what's best for the city is gonna be, uh, you know, the most financially, uh, what makes the most financial sense. And that's, that's where I'm coming from, because you take, take all your numbers, it's the same thing, now you have this position at eleven thousand dollars a month, and then we're gonna have to farm out for other, uh, other services, which could, you know, depending on hourly rates, put us back, you know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars a month. Uh, so it just, that, that's the trouble I'm having.
To me, I think this is, this position, I mean, we're talking a lot about IT, but that's only a small portion of it.
That's the only thing everyone's talking about, though.
But...
And that's the, that's the problem I have, is I have to justify this, and I've talked to the city manager twenty-five times about this, and so, my questions aren't new, but it's, you know, I keep hearing IT, 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 project managers gotta serve a wide array of, uh, issues, and I'm not getting that, and I have to justify a, a vote. And so that's why I need, I need someone to sell me on, on the way this is supposed to, to go, is the thing.
Go ahead.
You're, you're already saying what the biggest project is, that's IT. That's why you're hearing IT, IT, IT. The biggest problem that we have within this building, besides that it's old and every... The biggest problem that we have within this building, besides that it's old and everything's falling apart, is that our tech needs to be replaced. That's going to be the biggest project.
Correct.
To me, that's why you're hearing IT, IT, IT. But I could be wrong. Is, is there anything else that?
I mean, there, there's several projects, but most of them have, have a technology component that, that would be included.
Kale?
I, I was going to say the same thing, except there's a lot of projects, you know, I don't come down here every day, but I drive by almost every day. And I see Lois Otto here way too much. And this is a person I see that will be taking a whole lot off her desk, as well as anybody else who may need it besides the IT stuff. And that's what I see as being a positive. We just got done doing the strategic plan, and this person would be likely to leave on most of that strategic plan and keep us in line to that too.
Raymond?
I'm still in the same conundrum here, so.
Gary, you have any more?
Yes. What are the qualifications that we're expecting for this? Is it, is that job description in our packet?
It is in your packet.
Okay.
Go look at it.
Are the qualification, I-
Go ahead.
Are the qualifications in?
Let her read the qualifications.
Oh, the qualifications are in there too.
Please, yeah.
So I'm going to look at the, okay, so it would be, plan, organize, manage, and coordinate city projects, practices procedures and techniques of research, information analysis, and report development, technology advancement and how they can and will be applied within the city's current or future business models, quality assurance programs, gather, organize, analyze, and present a variety of data and information, prepare accurate reports to the city council, communicate well during public presentation, establish and maintain cooperative working relationships, and their ability to carry out and manage application designs, more or less the same thing, effectively oversee multiple projects simultaneously while managing project costs, resources, and schedules, interpreting city council policies, procedures, rules, and regulations, evaluate options, develop alternatives, including cost justifications for development and application of approved projects, communicate, I already read that one, work independently.
That's basically the gist, Ms. Vera?
No, I was looking for qualifications. Do they need a bachelor's degree in IT? Do they need ten years of experience working or-
So the education component of that would be graduation from accredited college or university with a bachelor's degree in public business administration or related field. And as with most of our job descriptions, education requirement may be substituted with equivalent years of experience.
Is that an entry question?
Well, it does. I, again, like I said, I, I can attach, put an attachment on email, and that's about as far as I get. So do those qualifications, I mean, is that, so I, I am relying a lot of knowing that you have so much IT knowledge, Danny, on what you think. I mean, is that an adequate amount of qualification for this position?
In my opinion, it's enough to get at least projects up and going. You're never going to find one person that's going to understand every single thing when it comes to the tech, whether it's running a website, doing video editing, telling you to turn a computer on and off again. You're, you're never going to find a person that's going to know it all. So for this to be a projects ma-, a management position that has, to have some IT background, I, I think that qualifications are there.
And one last question to help me with my decision. Is this a, a position that comes with a contract term, or is it just, what if we put this position in play and we find out a year from now, this is completely not meeting our needs? What, what happens at that point? Have we bought this person's for an amount of time, or is there any way to stop, drop, and roll, or?
Well, it's not a director position, so it wouldn't have a contract in that way. It's not an at-will, but they still would have a probationary period, and if they're not able to deliver what we're expecting, that's when you make those.
Okay. And in no way am I saying, let's hire someone and, and set them up to fail. That's not what I'm saying. But with all of us up here not having the direct IT experience, and, and really, you know, I'm, I'm kind of looking at Danny for direction, and I know that Councilman Raymond, his concern, so it's like, I want to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're making a good decision there, because we do have to be accountable, obviously, to our districts and to our citizens. But then we also have to be responsible to, to our employees here at City Hall, because they're kind of all working with, you know, only three rollers on their chairs right now. So we want to be able to provide them the adequate tools in order to, to do a better job or a more efficient job as well.
So to answer your question, you could fund it and you can unfund a position through the budget process. So not being a department head, you're not under contract, so?
Well, that was just kind of my question is, this was a project manager, so yeah, okay, not a department head then. Okay, gotcha.
Everybody's got their questions sufficiently answered? Looking for direction from the council?
Well, I mean, looking at this in the totality, it looks like an assistant city manager position. Do we still have that in the budget? I can't, I can't remember.
Lori?
I don't know if we have it in the budget. We still have a job classification for that.
So are you done with that question, or?
Yeah, I'm still thinking. Go ahead.
I don't want to change gears and head to a different job title and different responsibilities. I like, I feel comfortable knowing what we have tonight, to move forward to, as the chief said, keep up with what's going on. Lot of stuff going on, so maybe it could change later on, but I think, I think it's important that we stay focused on what we're looking at here. So I make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll check it.
Yes.
Raymond?
No.
Kale?
Yes.
Vieira?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
See, council matters. Councilman Raymond?
You're mad at me, so I get to start?
I'm not mad at you. We, we passed the budget, so we may not always agree, and I, I hear what you're saying, though, so.
I was going somewhere, you cut me off.
I did that on purpose.
I know you did. The only thing I have, well, I got, I got a whole bunch, but I'm not in a fighting mood right now. So Ms. Dora Anderson, I ran into her outside earlier, gave me a flyer this Saturday at-
Who, who's that?
Ms. Dora Anderson.
She's wish-
Ms., Ms. Plus Atwater. And Ms. Californian Plus California now.
Very good, Ms. Californian.
She won, so congratulations to her. And Mr. Ambrose, I'm sorry, this is your district, but it'll be Ralston Park, 3:00 PM. Everyone in the city cordially invited to a meal in the park with Ms. Californian Plus, Dora Anderson, Pastor Ramon Hyde of Winton, and Pastor Phil Jenkins of Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church.
She's raising money to be Ms. Plus America. So she won Atwater, then she moved on to the state of California, as Councilmember Raymond said, and that picnic in the park will be a fundraiser, so she can move on to Ms. Plus USA. It looks really good.
There's no price.
It's a donation fundraiser. Anything else, Councilman Raymond? Vieira?
Are you going to talk about, I'm sure you're going to talk about that.
Go ahead. I will, do whatever you guys don't do, I will talk about, so please talk about-
Well, I just want to make sure that you talk about and give all of the information on the egg hunt.
Yes. Pass it down to-
Because that's really exciting to see fun things happening for the kids.
So what, what does the council bring you back?
Easter egg hunt.
Right. So tell us about it.
So twenty nineteen egg hunt, City of Atwater, Saturday, April twentieth, from ten AM to twelve noon at Veterans Park, which is on the corner of Bellevue Road and Buick. Ages two to eleven. Bring your Easter basket, take a photo with the Easter bunny, and what, are they supposed to turn these in there, or is this just something fun? So it's a coloring contest, so I don't even know all the answers or anything.
Janelle, can you tell us about the coloring contest?
You can bring in, they're, on the side of the flyer, there is a place where you can color. Bring that in for a prize.
Hold that up.
There's flyers on the back as well, and we've posted them on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. There's links on the webpage, our www.atwater.org, links at the bottom of our webpage to all of the Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook as well. And then we'll also be raffling off bikes for every age.
Who donated those?
APOA, and also our firefighters as well. Those were donated. So ages zero to three, I'm sorry, zero, yes, zero to three, four to seven, and eight to eleven age groups will be-
I'm donating bikes to that project.
Okay. And also our office, our chief of police will be donating as well. So it'll be super fun. We can't wait to have everybody out.
And who's assisting the city with that?
Lions, Atwater Winton Lions Club also donated quite a bit of money as well, so they're co-sponsoring with us.
They're co-sponsoring?
Yes. They are co-sponsoring and donating. How exciting.
Yes, so they're, they have quite a few volunteers out there.
And it's, it's at Veterans Park, where I believe in the next year or two, the city is going-
Year, year, less than a year.
Next year, the city is going to start seeing some really exciting things for our youth happening over there. So I'm not going to say splash pad, but everybody knows where I stand on that, and I'm super, super excited about it, because I really want to see the kids in the community have something safe and fun to do. Now I got, I lost train of thought, because, you know, I got all excited about that.
New grandmother.
Oh, I have two new grandbabies, one boy, one girl, and they were born on Wednesday. My daughter, I just have to man give her a shout out. That girl is a trooper. And the little boy came in weighing six pounds, four ounces, and then the little girl came in weighing five pounds, fourteen ounces. I don't know, I'm on lack of sleep right now. But anyway, congratulations to my family. That puts me at eleven grandchildren, so I'm very exciting, very exciting. If anybody knows me, they know how much I love my family and my grandbabies, so. Now I'm really, now I'm really thrown, because I got all excited about that, so that's, I guess, all I have tonight.
Can you think of something else before we finish?
I will, trust me.
Kale?
Well, last meeting, we talked and approved our strategic plan, and I'd like to say that success doesn't just happen, it's planned out, and we're making that plan, and, including now with the crew tonight for project manager and what chief said tonight, I, I can honestly say I'm very excited for the city. We're moving forward together in a, to create a more positive Atwater that, and we're working together respectfully, every single person that's seated up here, and, and I love the fact that we're doing this, and I love what the chief said tonight. And oh, city, I have in my notes, congratulations to Grandma and Councilmember Cindy Vieira on her twin grandchildren being, so I was going to bring that up, so there you go.
Councilman Ambrose?
I would like to say congratulations as well on, on the grandkids, and also, since we're talking babies here, I'd like to congratulate my neighbors, the Spenglers, who just gave birth to a baby boy early this morning. Nothing else?
Okay, a few things. The VFW auxiliary here at Atwater Post, their seventieth anniversary was Saturday. I was able to partake in some pizza, some Italian pizza and cake. It was a wonderful event, attended by many, and they're deeply gratified, or have gratitude for the community of Atwater and what's going on in Atwater. There's a lot of discussion about the positive things that are happening all over Atwater, not just in one location. There's a, a new downtown historic Atwater Downtown Association being created as we speak, and I donated the first two hundred dollars to help seed that project, along with Councilman Raymond and Councilmember Vieira. I don't think we've shared everything with, with the other two council members here, but we're trying to do some positive things downtown. It's not related to the Chamber of Commerce or the City of Atwater. It's businesses getting together and people in the community that want to see change and something different, and they want our Christmas lights back on Main Street. So John Cardenas, myself, and Julio Sandoval have been talking about this for two years and four months, and we, we lost our Christmas lights when they redid Main Street. So we're talking with the business owners of doing the city line with the white low-voltage lights that would go down the main street on both sides, and that's what they're going to be raising money for. They're going to have a car show. They already have over a hundred cars committed to this car show, and this organization is just kind of organic, just got created. So to have over a hundred cars, three different car show clubs wanting to do something says tremendous amount about Atwater, that people want to come here to show their stuff off their beloved cars, and we're going to probably do it. They're going to, I'm not in charge of it, I'm just facilitating along with the other council members. They're going to do it downtown Atwater to showcase Atwater, to get people down to those local businesses downtown to basically sell Atwater. So thank you guys very much for that. That's awesome. And the VFW will be open during that car show and those functions, and they're actively supporting it. The Atwater Winton Lions Club, I went to dinner Saturday. We had a table attend, attended by the chief, our district attorney, Kimberly Lewis, the Clarks, Dennis and, Dennis Clark, and my wife and everybody else. That was great. We raised at the dinner for the public auction, for the, the dinner auction, the chief and I were kind of competing. We, we like to talk a lot, and we also like to compete, so I finally got somebody to, to challenge me on stuff. And I bid on an auction item, and we're at the same table as a dessert auction item, and he, he would outbid me, so we kept bidding back and forth, and then we had members of the community caught on to this bidding where we did, and then they outbid us, and they brought the dessert auction over, and then we were sharing with other tables, and so at one point, we didn't get to buy anything yet. So the chief got up and said, well, I got something really cool to auction off, so he did a little package that intertwines the people that came to the dinner that night to help support the Lions Club, and we raised over a thousand dollars, just the chief and I, for an event the chief's going to put on for these two tables that bid, that will give a behind-the-scenes tour with the police chief, some actual hands-on with some, some police equipment. It's going to be really exciting, and we're going to have eight people in the community that's never been around City Hall before, spending the day with our police chief, and I think a couple of us council members are going to barbecue for those community members. But they gave a thousand dollars just for that one item, and we raised almost another thousand on other dessert stuff, but we never had to buy it. They just brought it to us, and we share with everybody.
All the money stays.
And all the money stays local for the Atwater Winton Lions Club, and the Carvellos cooked dinner. It was fabulous steak and scampi, and it was, it was a to-do event, and next year's their twentieth anniversary, so you better get your tickets now, or you better get on the, the list to attend that for next year, because that's going to be the biggest event in Atwater next year for, for sure. The ninety-third OMS, Harry Marcarien and those guys, what you guys did out at Veterans Park is now facilitating our Easter egg hunts coming back, the parks clean, the Atwater, St. Anthony's 4-H do the, the cleanup of the park. The disabled veterans guys are out there cleaning up Veterans Park on a daily basis. Our public works guys are doing a great job keeping it mowed and maintained. The love that's coming back into Atwater, just because we're getting out of the way and encouraging it, it's not us, it's the community doing it. So a big shout out to everybody on that. Police and fire, both your, your organizations, thank you guys for donating bikes for the Easter egg hunt that's coming up. And chief, thank you personally for donating a bike. And that's all I have tonight, so thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.